This is the meeting for the County of Pecos City Record City Council meeting. Today is Thursday, August 28, 2025, and it is 5:30 PM. At this time, let the record show that we have present Councilman Saldana, Councilman Carrasco, Councilman Graham, and Councilman Arona. At this time, Councilman Carrasco will lead us in an invocation, and Councilman Graham will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Father, on behalf of all who are gathered here today, I extend my sincere gratitude for your unwavering love and guidance. Your blessings have been abundant and your profound encompassing life itself. We are particularly grateful for your ability to engage in meaningful work and for the honor of assuming appropriate responsibilities. Your unwavering love and support has been a constant source of inspiration and comfort throughout our lives. We are deeply appreciative of those in our presence and the impact that you've had in our lives. Lord, tonight, I pray for the Gomez family, that you comfort them, give them strength and peace to see them through the lost and sorrow. Let the memories of their loved ones become a source of comfort, not just pain. Guide them to find solace in community, support, and family and friends. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, our council, and various levels of tax and entities, that you guide us and make us, in your heart, what is best for this community. I pray for tonight's agenda, Lord, that we make all the right decisions with confidence on what is good and fitting. And I pray for the ability to work together in harmony, even when there's honest disagreement. I ask of you these things in Jesus' mighty name I pray.
Amen.
Praise your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind you, if you do have your cell phone with you, please put it on silent at this time. I will open the floor for public comments. Just as a reminder, please limit your public comments to three minutes as we have several agenda items to go over. And also, remind council and the audience that we cannot respond to your public comments at this time. We will take it under advisement and possibly bring it up as the next agenda, uh, pre-, uh, and coming, upcoming agenda item. And for record keeping purposes, if you do have public comments, please set your name before you push that poll up. Is there any public comments?
My name is Brent Jacob, and I'm here on behalf of PBT ISD, the school district. I'm here on behalf of our school board and the district to address a comment that was made at your August 18 meeting by one of the council members. The comment made was, "When are the other entities like school or hospital going to put skin in the game?" That comment was disappointing, not only because it was, because it ignored the facts, but because no one at your table refuted it. So tonight, I'd like to set the record straight. First, our schools. In the past four years, our community has supported two bond elections, ensuring every PBT ISD facility will be new by 2028. We have built buildings, and we are building more, and we have delivered them on time and under budget for our students and our community. The 21 bond is already paid off, saving local taxpayers over $76 million in interest payments. These two bonds have generated more than $800 million in economic activity and $16 million in local and state taxes, and over $1.1 million in permit fees paid directly to the city of Pecos. That's real skin in the game. Second, our community contributions. We funded $450,000 traffic light for safer streets, paved sidewalks, and leased land on the east side for improvements. We contribute over $70,000 annually to the Pecos Proud Initiative, supporting cleanup efforts that the city could not afford alone. Third, quality of life. We provide free meals and school supplies and every student after school, in after school care for working families, and housing for staff. This summer, we opened the Discovery School for all Pecos residents. These are investments in families, in children, in the future workforce of this community. And let us remember, as the second highest recaptured district in Texas, PBT ISD has returned over $1.2 billion to the state in the last 12 years. That's money we fought to keep in Pecos this past legislative session with no support from this council. Eighty cents of every dollar we collect goes back to the state. So yes, we have skin in the game. We always have. Meanwhile, this council is considering an 800% pay raise and insurance benefits for yourselves while cutting contributions to your own employees' health insurance. My comments are not to disparage city government, but I will not remain silent when the facts are ignored. PBT ISD has done more to build up Pecos. It is time we all focus on progress and not finger pointing. Thank you.
I'm Gail Box, and I just wanted to come and tell you you're my friends, but I don't think you should be compensated. I don't, at all. And insurance, you're gonna have everybody gonna run to city council for insurance. You need to think about that. When Hugh and I graduated from tech, came back to Pecos, we got involved. We were on the Chamber of Commerce. We were on several committees. We're still on those committees. Hugh was on the school board 15 years. I was on the school board 12 years. Hugh's on the hospital board probably 20 years. Do we need to be compensated? No. We love our community. We're giving back to our community. Does it take time? Yes, it takes time. You know it before you run. It takes time. Randy, you're on the school board with me. We didn't just meet once a month. We had lots of meetings, lots of trainings. So I'm just sorry. I disagree. I think you should be in it, for the love of your city. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As you all know, my name is Kenneth Winkles Jr., and I'm glad to call most everyone on this council a friend of mine. So I hope you take this public comment in the spirit of constructive criticism as it is meant. I had refrained from addressing the council for the last few months until Councilman Carrasco opened the door last week in a special meeting by admitting to participating in closed-door meetings. Now regardless of the intention or the context of that statement, the statement was made. So I guess that is where the current Pecos rumor mill is running rampant again throughout our city, that we have city council members participating in these closed-door meetings. With that being said, let's address the definition of a walking quorum. A walking quorum is a series of private communications among members of the governmental body that collectively constitute a quorum and allow for deliberation on public business outside of a public, formal meeting. This practice is illegal under the Texas Open Meetings Act, which requires all such discussions to occur in public. So when you have lunch at the country club or other restaurants for everybody to see with a particular person that is bringing items in front of this body, such as tax abatements, that, gentlemen, when you discuss it at lunch, whether it's one or two council members, that is a walking quorum. In regards to the private meetings at the country club, isn't it strange that over the last two years that only men members have been invited to those private meetings? I verified today, not once has either Councilman Trujillo, Councilwoman Trujillo, or the mayor been invited to these private meetings. Which brings up the very definition of misogynistic. That is an adjective that describes showing a hatred, prejudice, or deep-seated bias against women. Examples of being misogynistic, can't pronounce it, dismissing women's ideas or expertise in professional or social meetings, actions or beliefs that women are inferior to men or belong to a lower status. So a word to the wise and my friends on this council. Before you continue to have these private lunches, ask yourself why the female members of this council have never been invited, and why you are discussing business that has a very high likelihood of being an agenda item that you will personally vote on in the future. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Mayor and council, Charles Lino, city manager, I just wanted to bring something up to the audience as well as to the council. As you all know, you approved several months ago the renovation of some cooling system, the HVAC systems here at city hall. The HVAC systems are gonna be started this next week, so we'll have big cranes out in front of city hall. It's going to require us to close city hall on Friday, September 5th, because they will have all of the power off in this area related to that and be placing and tying in the units on top. So I kind of, I haven't had that conversation with council nor the community, so we've, we're putting, we're gonna blanket everything out so everybody's aware, but we, city hall will be closed next Friday, the 5th.
Any other public comments? And we will close public comments at this time. We will go to our consent agenda. Item E1, approve the minutes of prior city council meetings. This will be the August 14 regular city council meeting, the August 18 special city council meeting, and the August 19 special city council meeting. E2 is review the expenditure report. E3 is the airport fuel flowage report for January 2025 through July of 2025. Review the Cyclone Ballpark's July 2025 report, and review the July 2025 PD, ACO, and EMS reports.
Kind of comment on the Cyclone Ballpark's financials. We're still continuing to show an operating loss of $1.2 million so far through July, which is about the same as last year. I hope that we can get something hot out there quickly and not late. So I would love to see that turn to the table on these days.
Majority of your revenue's gonna come in from tournaments. We designed the Cyclone Ballpark. We started hosting tournaments and everything was going good, and somewhere down the road, the relationship was broken, and we're trying to amend that relationship right now. We had a account, I think it was the Cyclone Board, that we had there. We reconstructed the board with different types of individuals that bring different things to the table as advisors, and a lot of these people have relationships with USA Softball and U Tri Softball, and that allows them to bring back that connection and break bread to start bringing tournaments back to Pecos. We're also looking at innovative ideas such as flag football. We're also looking at soccer leagues. So, you know, I think when we had this thing built, I wasn't here at the time, but at the beginning, we really didn't have a plan in place, and then we relied on Little League to make money, and now that Little League is no longer there, we're not making any money, and most, the majority of the money was on concessions then. So like I said in the past, we're paying a third-party company $27,000 a month. It doesn't make sense, but yet they're out of Florida, and they're not here boots on the ground to, in my opinion, I haven't seen, I've been in sports here coaching for the last two years, and I still to this day haven't seen an innovative tournament with a wow factor. So I know that's the past, and I've asked Charles to screw up the contract to see if there's a way we could break that contract, but until they're not gonna put in any work or boots on the ground here, then we're gonna continue to lose money. And we were losing money, and we should've looked at it as phase two as well, like, okay, we're building phase two, but yet we lost all this money, and that's kind of where I said we need to bring in people with experience that know the people that compete at these tournaments to start bringing in different types of people to come make that money. So I, I've really taken a lot of research and time into this, how it's been losing money in, by the past. I'm not, I don't want to talk about the past anymore. I want to talk about what we're gonna do to fix the future, and those, those conversations are in the process, Mr. Graham.
Chief, on PD calls, has our noise complaints from the bars gone down?
We haven't received any extra complaints, so yes, ma'am, I would say they have gone down.
Just for our ordinance.
You know, it's still, it never had gotten over the 85%, and so it's still, you know, it's still operational as it is. I know that there's been bans in different organizations bringing in loud events, but the calls have seemed to have gone down.
Okay.
A little good, down of expenditures, so I'm kind of questioning, anybody else here? I don't know.
I have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilman Arona, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries. We are gonna skip to item F8, discuss the naming and/or sponsorship of the field at Cyclone Ballpark, Detective Carrasco.
Mayor and council, we are honored tonight to have the friends and family and those impacted by the life of Cruz Renee Jr., also known as CJ, join us here tonight. Can you guys please stand, all the friends of CJ and family? Thank you for coming out here tonight. We gather to remember the honor of CJ. CJ was a remarkable individual. His sports journey began in Little League in Pecos, where he consistently demonstrated exceptional talent and dedication. Throughout his high school years, he was selected for multiple All-Star teams. Motivated by a desire to make a positive impact, CJ Gomez dedicated his time and efforts to mentoring the next generation. He committed himself not only to coach him, but to providing the same care and encouragement that he received during his youth. The word coach is simple, but for those who have felt the impact of their guidance, it means so much more. It is a word that embodies not only the act of teaching and leading, but also nurturing and aspiring and believing in others when they don't even believe in themselves. As we reflect on the life and legacy of CJ, we celebrate a journey marked by his passion, his sacrifice, and his resilience. CJ had an infectious smile and a personality that wavered even when the life challenges that followed him. CJ battled cancer the way he played sports. With all his heart, CJ fought to the end with his family by his side every step of the way. CJ Gomez was a beacon of kindness, cheerfulness, and positivity. We're honored to have him as a friend and cherish the precious time that we spent together, and so is my son, as you see him there with CJ. Tonight, I propose to honor his memory and life and dedication with a plaque at the Cyclone Field Number Two. This plaque serves as a reminder for his unwavering support to this community that he gave countless hours of his life with passion and a love for the sport.
What we do it now is always discuss.
Anybody want to discuss anything?
Just wanted to discuss, father. We can't have, but we should bring it back. We just wanna put a plaque.
Well, can we show them where the location is? CJ was always practicing in Field Number Two, and why not name it the field? We're, we're gonna say that as well, naming the field as, for CJ. Do you have that other photo of the location of the plaque? This is what the plaque would look like? The family gave the wording, gave them the option to pick the location as well. Can you go to the next photo, please? No? Okay, but it's in Field Number Two, and I'd like to see if we can honor him with a plaque and naming Field Number Two in his honor.
Put that on our next agenda.
And I think, I think with, with somebody that was involved as much as he was in sports, 'cause I'm, I'm over there twice a week at that facility, and it's a, it's a grand facility, and it's a facility that takes the embodiment, embodiment of what Pecos stands for, you know, bringing up families together in, in, in sport. And it, it's all kinds of people out there. But this gentleman here, and I didn't know him that well, I, I talked to him a couple of times when one of my grandsons was playing, but he was always there. So I, I think this is a grand thing for us to do for the community. I'm, I'm very supportive of it.
I'm not, I didn't know CJ very well at all, but I know his parents, and they're good people, so he's been from a good family.
So we have that added to our agenda for next time, as I consider.
We'll vote on it next council meeting. You guys just wanted to discuss it today, so thank you for coming. Mayor and council, if I can for just a second, there's also other opportunities that, just to make sure council is aware. Holly and I had a conversation also, and we do have another area that she's put together that's called Hero Plaza, that is also over there at Wood Streets in O'Connell.
It's, uh...
It's over by the airport. Holly's, Holly and Mary Carmen's plan with that was to honor somebody each year as being a hero of the community and memorialize him that way. So there's also potentially, if council thinks it fit, an opportunity to do something there if you also choose. I just wanted to throw it out there so that y'all are aware that there is a program in place to do something about that for it.
Council approves. I think you guys are hosting a tournament, correct, in his honor, a scholarship tournament in October?
We're gonna do a, just a memorial game for scholarship, though it's good. We're starting to put a scholarship in his name for the school. We wanna keep his name out there, keep, remember him, and this plaque is one of the things that y'all, we'll keep the name out there so we won't forget it.
See if we could do that in Field Number Two.
Yeah, I would like that.
Yes, sir. Thanks for coming out today.
Thank you, thank you, council.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry for your long. I'm sorry for your long.
Thank you.
We have a discussion here? We will go to item F1, update on the Bessie Haynes Park Project, Goal Four, Enhance Pecos' Quality of Life Through Recreation, Culture, and Education. And Mary Carmen is ill, so we've got to...
Yes, she's under the weather. She's wanted to be here. This is her, this is going to be her project. So I will be giving the update as to the public meeting that we held at our community center, and we had 112 total respondents. That was in-person and online. We anticipate a second public meeting September 30th, and at that meeting, we're gonna have two different concepts compiled from the previous ideas brought by the initial respondents. We should have a full concept ready for November for the council to review and see. And some of those items I wanted to cover that were the top selected, were, or most voted on, were the active recreation, which is playgrounds, 80 responses; passive recreation, pavilions, picnicking, 84 responses; natural, environmental, demonstration garden, 58 responses; and the arts culture, public interactive art, 90 responses. So, and also to remind everyone, this, this project can be followed online.
And where is the...
The second meeting, the second public meeting, we're gonna actually hold at the Bessie Haynes Gym in the vicinity of where the new park design is actually going to be. So we're hoping that more of our community comes out and engages in providing their ideas of what they'd like to see there.
We have a community that's usually mostly social media, I guess, between the ages of 20 to 35, so they're not the ones that usually like to come out. They've been getting a lot of feedback in the community, involved in a lot of sports. I go to the rec a lot, and one thing I did notice, the rec, travel volleyball is getting very popular now, and the rec, if you go around 5:30, it's really packed with basketball and travel volleyball. It's just a big mess. And that's something that a lot of the moms and parents were asking about, outdoor volleyball courts without the sand but the tile soft surface, and it's getting real popular. We got travel baseball, travel softball, but for the girls, we don't have any. So that's something that they did bring up to my attention. Of course, I stepped out really quick, so I apologize if I didn't hear some of the items, but pickleball courts, walking trails, of course, biking trails, this is just everything that's kind of was a top, state-of-the-art playground equipment. And the last one was maybe like 10 people, a little chessboard table, if you wanted to play chess out there. And of course, the major one is the swimming pool, so that's kind of the feedback I've been receiving.
And those are all great ideas. We are trying to work with our community and identify what our community wants. So it's really important if, you know, to share, that it's important that they come out and provide that, that input of what they'd like to see. These decisions are gonna be based on what they want to see and what they would like to take advantage of in that particular area. So yes, those are all great ideas, and they actually do fall in line with what part of our plan is for interactive sports.
So when is our next meeting?
September, we expect it to be September 30th.
Seven o'clock, please.
I believe it's gonna be, our last timeline was 5:30 to 8 o'clock.
And we'll have the representatives from...
Yes, the representatives from half associates will, will be onsite again with their boards. So there are visuals, and those visuals that he brings are also online for those who want to go online and, and look at the actual concepts. And one last thing is a survey on the second, on the second meeting, public meeting, is going to be implemented as well, probably for about two weeks. That can be followed as well online, and the survey can be implemented online as well.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll go to item F2, presentation of the activities and projects of the 2024/2025 Keep Pecos Beautiful Committee. This is under Strategic Goal Three, Promote the Visual Image of Pecos. Juanita Davila Marta, Keep Pecos Beautiful Committee Chair.
Yes, I'm Juanita Davila Mata, the chair to the Keep Pecos Beautiful Committee. And what an incredible year we've had. From benches, planters, flowers, and murals, it has all been a fun learning experience. We did have a few bumps and obstacles along the way, but we were able to resolve all that. On behalf of our Keep Pecos Beautiful Committee, we would like to thank Mayor Winkles and the entire council for your financial support. We would also like to thank the city administration, especially Griffin Moreland, who is our liaison, and he provided support and guidance to us. It's been a successful year. Almost all of our projects are complete. The only one that we're still working on is the downtown light project. The cables are up. We just need the lights to go up, and we're waiting on the electrician to do that. I appreciate our committee members. Alva Alvarez, please stand. Titatarien Brenda McKinney. And Nancy, I don't think was able to be here with us, Nancy Anchondo. We worked well together, and we all shared a common goal. And that is to make our community bright and colorful. A place that we can all be proud of and happy to call home. Our IT team so graciously put together a short PowerPoint highlighting our projects. So on the first screen, of course, we have our committee member names. The benches that were placed on the 100 and 200 blocks of Oak Street.
I really like those. Like, I sent them one the other day, and they're comfortable.
They are, and I've seen, you know, people taking pictures, like graduates or prom, kids going to the prom, sat there and took their pictures. So they are being utilized during the parade, the Fourth of July Parade, or West of the Pecos Rodeo Parade. There were people sitting on them as the parade came around, so they are being utilized. We have 14 self-watering planters on the 100 and 200 block of Oak Street. We placed the flowers in there back in May. We thank the city for watering, taking care of the watering of those planters. Even though they are self-watering, they go around making sure that there is water. And if water is needed, they, you know, they add the water to them. The murals, the splash pad mural, you see a before and after picture of the splash pad mural. Those were done in February. And then the other mural there at Maxi Park, you see a before and an after picture. And as you can see, how that building was brightened up with all the colorful colors that Monte Welt did for us. And we were on Coffee Clutch on February 19th, so that was exciting. The whole committee was able to go and be there and visit with Mr. Bill Randall Cole. And then the Veterans Mural Ribbon Cutting back in February, that was completed and inaugurated. The downtown light project in this picture, the cables had not been put up yet, but they were put up last week. And like I said, we just need the electrician to add the lights to them, and hopefully that'll get done in the next couple of weeks or so. We hosted a radio parade route facade competition. And the business pictured there, Linda's Decor and More, is the, the business that the committee selected as the prize winner. We had a lot of local businesses that donated items to be given. And hopefully, we can increase this and make it a bigger thing next year. It's something that we decided like two weeks before, and we just sort of threw it together, and it was pretty good, I thought. We did have several businesses that participated, so we were excited about that and hope that we can continue hosting more of these competitions later on. More benches, we, when we reviewed our budget, we saw that we had some extra dollars. And so we added four more benches, and we placed those at the 300 block of Oak Street. And I know I got some feedback from some of the businesses there, and they're very excited, and they're like, when are we getting flowers? So we hope to, you know, perhaps start with some of those projects, smaller projects at the next term if we get appointed or reappointed. So that's our excitement. That is the, the projects that we've had from the Keep Pecos Beautiful Committee. We're very proud of them, and we hope that the public will take care of them and that we will continue to expand. So, like I said, so that we can keep making our community brighter and more colorful, and so we can have happy people all around us all the time. Community, anybody want to have anything else to add? Alva?
Hi, I'm Alva Alvarez. And as part of our review, I thought it was important to bring back up some pictures that we presented in October of some sites that needed some cleanup efforts on behalf of the city. And I went today to those same places. And so I just made one set of copies. You can pass them around, but basically, we have befores, which are the screenshots from my phone when we were, you know, passing these pictures to each other from October 23rd. And then today, 10 months later, October 28th, you can see for yourself what's been done. And so when we first got appointed, we were told by administration that the enforcement and ordinances was not our duty, that ours was to plant flowers. We did that. And so I just, as a gentle reminder, would like to again reiterate the importance of enforcing our ordinances, because we can plant 10,000 flower boxes around the city, but when you have tires and weeds this tall and people not being held accountable, when we have ordinances in the books, our town's never gonna look better despite our efforts. And so I am happy to present these to you. Just because I would like really a commitment from City Council that administration, please be told to enforce ordinances in the books and start holding people in our community accountable, because we're responsible for making it look better. And so I appreciate that.
Thank you for coming out, Ms. Alvarez. It is your job. It is your job because you're a constituent. And I'm gonna make this very clear. Sometimes we forget the way the pyramid works. The way this pyramid works is the constituents are the bosses. They elect us to do a job. I'm not sitting in this chair because I decided I was an officer of the council today. I'm sitting here because a group of people, they got tired of this town, how disgusting and dirty it's become, wanted change, and they wanted something done. So don't think that I'm here because of the old blood. I'll be honest, there's a new wave coming into Pecos, and that new wave wants change, and they demand results. And I am here to be part of that new wave. And I have consistently demanded accountability. And to this day, I too, where there is no respect for leadership, have not received any reports. And I can promise you, we have no choice but to get on board. I drive around town all day. It's a small town, and it disgusts me going from the west side all over town, dropping off my kids, and it's a sight for sore eyes, just turning my face. I go to San Antonio, I come back home, my eyes, my eyes get refreshed, and then I come back to my beautiful hometown, and it's just debris after debris after debris. So when I'm here as your council, I'm here because you, my bosses, put me here. And that's where we forget the structure. And I'll repeat it, and I'll remind everyone here in this room. Constituents, mayor council, directors, I mean, sorry, city manager, directors, and the rest. And sometimes, I don't know where we got it confused, where somebody came in here and thought they had a bureaucratic mindset to run the show, but I can promise you, it's gonna get resulted pretty damn fast along the council. That's all I have to say.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
How many left off the picture?
Which one?
On Fifth Street. And I've been trying for two years, trying to get something done on that.
Oh, on, on Bodark or in Fifth, yes?
It's got, it's got a bunch of tree stumps.
And tires.
It did have tires, and it rolled off, and just, you know, it's just trash.
It's out of my hands.
There's enough, there's enough out there for, for, as the ordinance are written, for them to reinforce. And I think it's time to not just slap them in the hand, but start putting money attached to that. Because, I mean, you know, I hate, I hate the same thing. I see the same thing coming into Pecos from, on, on Third Street, it's bad. Coming in from 285 from the north side, it's bad, the entry. If, you know, it just gets disappointing to see where the progress is coming and the things that are happening, the good things that are happening, that still people still have it in their mind that it's not their responsibility. I, I had, I, I reported one vehicle that been sitting in a yard for about, I, I don't know, really, I don't know. The lady called me, so I went and looked at it. It's a big old army truck. I, I got with, with our administration. They finally, here last week, they finally moved it. I went by there and like, wow, finally moved it. But it, it, and it, it won't happen overnight. What's gonna happen is we, we have to start pushing. And yeah, give them a warning the first time, but if they're, they're already been given a warning, then it's time to start putting a, an attachment to it, you know, a, a, a fine. Some, some people can, can help it. They don't, they don't have, you know, family here or anything, they're old and all that. But with everything going on in Pecos, there's a lot of people coming in. And I, I worked out in the old field a lot for many years, and especially here. And one of the worst things, and I've said it before, the worst thing that I hated was when those guys would come and tell me, man, this is a dirty town. And this is my town, and I'm a councilman of this town. And I go to different places and I see it, see what they saw. I said, God, that's why they won't stay here. They'd rather stay in the larger parts out in, in the community, out in the county than inside of Pecos. We're trying to, we're trying to make it work, and it's gonna take all of us to help to make it work. It's not just the, the council, the mayor and the council and the city, but the constituents themselves. It's their property. We can't just walk in there and say, we're gonna take it. But if we write the ordinance, then the ordinance has to be enforced. And it, it doesn't matter if they like it or not, it's a law.
We, we did, and our budget put $100,000 for demos for old houses, you know, off the tax roads and commercial buildings. That's not enough. I did, I did ask that they increase that so we can make an impact on that. So that should help a little bit.
And, and that also includes businesses. I know, I brought it up, councilman, the ordinance, I got it up in between the Walmart and all that, that, or not Walmart, it's motels and what used to be Kentucky Fried Chicken, all that, weed, the kind of Sonic. I mean, it's, it's embarrassing. And, and we, we're, we're getting beautiful schools, beautiful stadiums. We've got people coming in for, for, you know, sports and all that from other communities, and this is what they're seeing.
And if I, if I may add to that, there is a picture there that wasn't taken, wasn't included in the October picture. But I don't know if Dollar General was one that got a tax abatement, but I think something the council should consider is if we're gonna give these tax abatements, then at minimum, these businesses who receive that benefit should be made to keep their lots clean. And if, you know, they're given one citation, then that should pull the tax abatement, but benefit. Because at the very least, if you're not paying taxes, then you should keep your lot clean. And I don't know if Dollar General is one who received one, but their lot, if you drive down there, it looks horrible, horrible.
Is that the one down there?
On Third Street.
I think that's a little piece at the front.
Yes, and but all, but even around there, it's like, I mean, it's just.
You can, you can't give tickets or teach pride, pride has to come from within from individuals. It got lost somewhere along the lines, and we lost control of it.
But then that's where you have to hit them with a ticket, you know? And they're not gonna like it, and they'll balk and run to you guys because they know you or whatever and ask for some sort of forgiveness. But it has to stop somewhere, and that's the only way you're gonna make any improvements, I think.
We're gonna enforce everyone. We're gonna enforce schools, church properties, notable people of the community, business owners, doctors. I don't care who you are, you're gonna get enforced. So if we can't follow those standards, then what are we doing here? Why am I sitting in this chair if my words have no teeth to them when it comes? That was the number one thing during my campaign, that a lot of people came in. Second was quality of life, but the first one is, please clean our town. Find a way to clean our town or find an initiative or follow the guidelines of cleaning the town. Are we enforcing? Okay, now what's next? Are we taking it to our judge? Are we finding, I mean, are we out there? So just bear with me, and I am asking those hard questions. And I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be honest, some people don't like it, too bad. Too bad. And there might be some people in leadership that are gonna like it. I'm sorry, I'm here to do a job. I'm not here to just sit around and look pretty here. I'm here to do a job, and that's what I was elected to do. And while I'm sitting here, you will see results. It might be little results, but we're eventually gonna get to that point where we're all gonna come together and say enough is enough. We'll take little wins, little by little, but we'll find those obvious wins. Our city manager, as a matter of fact, we had a, we do writeouts. I take him with me, I said, come with me, get in the car. I don't, I don't like lunches. I like to get in the car, sit in my passenger, and say, let's drive around. And he did promise to me something, and he made my day, that we're gonna be demoing that abandoned house in front of the dollar. That's the first thing I came to mind. If I'm gonna build a new school, why do I want my child to have a hazard in front of them? And sometimes I can't believe that me as a council and as a constituent have to remind somebody how to do a job that's obvious. It's obvious. There's no reason behind this.
So with Keep Pecos Beautiful, we've put this enormous task before the board members. And I think it's sad that we have volunteers that are going out trying to help, and if they're met with that kind of discouragement and disrespect, I think that's, it's shameful, and it should never happen. But it kind of goes back to why volunteerism is so low in this community. And not just volunteering for committees, it's for public office, for different things. And I think Keep Pecos Beautiful needs to be citywide, community-wide. It should not, you guys have been given ladies this enormous task of make the town beautiful, but we can't give you any money. Raise your money, and that, you can't do that. We know cost of supplies are very expensive, plants are supplies. So we, as a council, have tried to be more generous, but it's still not enough. There is a lot of things that still need to be done to Pecos. Buildings need to be demolished, roads fixed, lot, yards cleaned up. But I think Keep Pecos Beautiful should be, we should all be committee members. It shouldn't be just four, five strong, dedicated women that are met with this kind of negativity and resistance. And it's embarrassing, and it's shameful, and that's not, it shouldn't happen. It should not happen. And it seems kind of obvious, you know, people, communities should have pride in their yards and in their properties. and in their properties, and sometimes they do need help, but Keep Pecos Beautiful should be a communitywide, um, project and slogan. Honestly, we need to all have pride, return that pride. Um, I don't know, I, I think it's, I agree, it's gonna have to be stricter ordinances and stricter penalties to make sure that they can fulfill their responsibilities. And it's a collective effort, it's not gonna be just on the shoulders of our board members and the few people that volunteer, it has to be everybody.
Before we get off of this, I wanted, I wanted to say something that the, and, and I was excited to see it. We got a new business coming, the Dollar Tree. But have you seen, did you see what they did around the, their parking lot? They planted grass. They got a sprinkler system. What's wrong with the other business? I, I think, and, and I, I think, I don't know how we, if they did it on themselves, but it looks nice. Every morning I pass by there, and instead of seeing, I mean, yeah, there's dirt, but that road is fixing to be, when that project comes into play, that road's gonna be fixed, so we really don't need grass all the way into the, because that's, that's easement. But for what belongs to them, they, they actually planted grass. And that's real grass. That's good to see, real grass, not artificial stuff. And, but I, I got excited when I saw it. But then you've got a motel in the back that I guess they don't have, people that work on their, on their yard. And, and that's pretty, pretty embarrassing, when you've got a nice beautiful lawn in front, just a little piece, and then behind it, you've got a nice beautiful motel, but the yard looks bad.
Carl, I think that is a ordinance, the new business comes in, has to put in, I know we spent about sixty-five thousand there for HTO.
Yeah.
But it's already there, and it's on, on new business's own.
Yeah. But it's, it's great to see them. It, it was great to see them.
We go to item F3, discuss, consider the appointment or reappointment of five committee members for the Keep Pecos Beautiful Committee. Strategy goal three, promote visual images of Pecos, Griffin Moreland.
Mayor, council, Griffin Moreland, assistant to the city manager. Um, this follows a couple of different emails I sent y'all back in July and early August. Um, it is now time to reappoint the members of the Keep Pecos Beautiful Committee. Um, I will quickly run through who the current members are once again for your ease. Um, we have Ms. Tita Tareen, uh, who was nominated by Councilman Saldana, Brendan McKinney, nominated by former Councilwoman Seals, Ms. Alva Alvarez, nominated by Councilman Graham, Ms. Nancy Onchondo, nominated by Councilman Arona, and Juanita Davila Mata, nominated by Ms. Trujillo. Um, and then of course, the mayor and city manager serve as ex officio members of that board. Um, the only stipulations that the Keep Pecos Beautiful bylaws give you guys to consider is that they must be Pecos residents, and that current committee members may be reappointed. And while we are on the vein of current committee members, uh, the four ladies before you have expressed willingness to serve on the committee again for another year, should you guys deem it so. Um, and Ms. Nancy Onchondo said she really enjoyed her time on the committee, but she will be going elsewhere to pursue, uh, personal matters.
Is this a one-year term?
It is a one-year term.
Can we make it longer?
I see some fresh blood behind that one, I see Claire White. Larry, you used to have a lot of great ideas, you willing to get on board? You willing to get on board?
Yes, I, it's his, it's his pick.
I'm concerned about who her father is, though.
I can vouch for him.
I think she could sit on her own two feet.
That's right.
We're excited, we're excited.
These two-year terms, it's kind of staggered.
No, no.
Wait a minute.
That's a good board, that's...
It is, it's excellent, and they've done really great things, and I think they work really well together. Appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, Claire White.
But ain't broke, don't fix it, I'll stick with Ms. McKinney, they look like they're working very well.
Thank you.
They have a tight line, and that's the best thing you could do. And at the end of the day, thank you for your time in volunteering and having pride, key word, pride.
Absolutely, thank you.
Don't ever let nobody take that away from you.
They haven't, they won't.
Falls and deaf ears.
Yeah, Ms. Tareen had reached out to me, that she still wanted to be a member.
We have to have...
It is great, I think, I think you guys are doing a fabulous job, and, and it'd be great if more people would stand up, because step up, and not just have five board members, but have five board members with people behind to, to, when you, you're, you, you guys are all basically working, so when you, you're tied up with something, you can say, hey, can you take care of this for me? Uh, that would be great. And, but you know, success brings, brings other people closer because they, they want part of that. So, I, I just encourage you guys and keep on going. And it'd be nice for longer term, but it gives you a year to work together and say, like, man, maybe I, I need a, a year of rest.
We can't procrastinate, if you give us more time, we only have a year, so we have to get it done.
How would y'all feel, we can't go around it, but we can go with the agenda for next council meeting, go for two years instead of one.
Or do they have to submit their files?
Uh, under the Keep Pecos Beautiful bylaws, they would initiate changes, but you do have discretion to initiate it yourself if you choose.
I would like to see, what else do you want to ask, upcoming?
We're gonna, we, uh, we talked about different projects that we want. I think all of you have heard that the hospital graciously donated the wall to the Masonic Lodge on, at the corner of Oak and Seven, and we're thinking about a mural. What the mural will consist of, we haven't talked about it, we haven't decided. Uh, that, we've talked about wrapping or having or painting the utility boxes on Oak Street to bring color to those things. Uh, we've talked about, uh, putting Christmas lights on the trees at the park, at Maxi Park. Uh, but of course, in my morning walks, you know, some of those pine trees need some pruning, you know, because the limbs are like way down here, and they're going to be need, they need to be cleaned up so that if we do go with that project, you know, there'll be lights that are visible on the trunk, on top, wherever we decide, and then we need to decide which trees, because there's so many trees at Maxi Park.
Do them all?
Right?
There, we have ideas.
So we have lots of ideas, those are just some of the things that we're considering.
You know, in Austin, I used to live in Austin, there was a famous big tree that you would get under anything and spin it. And every time I'd come home, I'd say, we're not really utilizing the beautiful things that we have, meaning all those pine trees. My vision was like, light them all up, make it a wow factor that people actually come to Pecos, and we put a big tree in the center and light up the rest of them. You know, so that's a really good vision.
I'd love to do that, that that would be such a, an encouraging, beautiful sight. You know, you go to San Antonio, go to the River Walk during Christmas, and their huge trees are all lit up. I mean, and they're huge, but every branch is full of lights and along with the tree trunks, I would love to see something like that.
Claire, don't you have a brother that can help?
I, I have connections.
That's why we want her.
And you can get multi-use lights as well, light it up like they used to light up the UT Tower during the win, you could put the purple and gold lights, instead of blue moon whenever our team's win. We could have UT Tower, I had a brother.
Appointee, Ms. Juanita Mata, she is organized and driven and consistent, and I, I am honored that you want to continue to serve, and all of you that want to continue to serve in your efforts, and it's appreciated, and we, or whatever you guys need, whatever help you need, um, I hope not only as a council, but as a community and a collective effort with all of the entities. I think we're all invested, and I don't know where the misconception went, but I won't get into that. We are all connected, we're, um, we all want the same things. We want a beautiful community that we can be proud of, where we can walk around with our families and have photo ops to make those memories, and we, it's, I love those ideas, but thank you for your leadership, and I would be honored if you would continue for...
She's the first one here and the first one believed, or last one to leave, so... And we all work together.
Yes, we do.
I think Powell's in Pecos, she wants to continue to serve.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes.
For two or three years, a few years?
Unlivened.
Unlivened.
Until y'all fire us.
Well, mayor, if there's anything else, I'd like to make a motion to consider reappointing the four members that are there, all the other council members, and myself, a nominee, Claire White, to be my representative for chair.
I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Graham, to approve the reappointment of Tita Tareen, Brendan McKinney, Alva Alvarez, and Juanita Davila Mata, and the appointment of Claire White to the Keep Pecos Beautiful Board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show who most in here. Missing meetings, but I have other things on Tuesday nights, too.
Thank you, council.
Okay, we go to item F4, discuss, consider setting the date for the 2025 trick-or-treating activities. Goal five, promote opening consistent communications. Every day on...
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Speaking of holidays, we have October coming up and Halloween. Um, of course, Halloween's right around the corner, and I kind of wanted to bring up the trick-or-treating, uh, date for discussion. Um, Halloween falls on Friday, October 31st this year. And in the past, I know council has sometimes scheduled trick-or-treating on the weekend before, or even on the day of Halloween. Um, just a few events happening around that time to consider. Uh, Trick or Tree is happening on Saturday, October 25th, plus the Mother Goose Parade. Uh, no schools happening on Friday, uh, not happening on Friday. Uh, PHS Cross Country State Meet is happening on Friday as well, and Pecos High School Varsity Football Game, it's, it's gonna be an away game, happening on Friday, October 31st as well. Um, we will be hosting the, or we will be organizing the Merchants Halloween Town again this year, um, but I'm kind of waiting on that to kind of see what you guys decide on the date, um, to go forward with it. So, I'll leave it to you guys as, you know, decision, uh, what works best for, for the community.
May I make a motion, we approve Friday, October 20, the 31st, for sure. Also, will you trick or treat for this year?
Carrasco, seconds, please.
We have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Carrasco, to approve this in October the 31st as our trick-or-treating activity night.
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you, mayor and council.
So, so we do Halloween for a week this year. Um, item F5, discuss, consider Resolution 25-08-08R, a resolution entering into a contract agreement with Reeves County for the November 4th, 2025 general election. Goal five, promote opening consistent communication. Wendy Luque.
Mayor and council, uh, before you is Resolution Number 250808, and that is entering into a contract with Reeves County for the election services for November 4th, 2025 general election. Um, it's also authorizing the city manager to execute the contract agreement. You'll also find an attachment, Exhibit A, that is the ballot wording for the two propositions that will be on the ballot for this election. You'll find the, um, contract that they are proposing. You'll also find in this contract, there is not a set amount as to, and the reason behind that is, they do need to be able to get a actual count of the employees, the supplies, uh, the material that they used for the election. You will see an estimate that they provided for $8,029.62. Um, it is an estimate, and it normally does not go too far off from what they provide normally when we have other elections.
Yep, so kind of know how many shows, they know how many ballots.
Mm-hmm. And they also on the, on, it's another Exhibit A of the contract, they attach the contract fee chart, and that has the hourly wage for the people working the elections, as well as the rental or leased fees for all the machinery, machinery that you have.
And mayor and council, Charles, we know the city manager, just to let you all note too, that the language on the ballot is going to include this is a tax increase, even though it's just reauthorizing, because that's what, uh, state regulations require. So, sometimes it's, we're not increasing taxes, we're just re, re implicit imposing, it has to be written that way. So, if you see something, you go, oh, that's not what we're doing. We have to do it, there's, we, we're obligated to do it per state statute.
We do that and I was running on the coffee class?
Mm-hmm.
We can, kind of.
And that was only added to Proposition 1.
Yes. So, we can, we can communicate that through coffee class.
So that we paper it and hopefully not...
That wording is very...
It is.
Then we'll have a lot of gifts.
Yes, sir. No, and we have to do a good job of selling it, because it is just reauthorizing, so we have to make sure that the communication is constant with, with our public, especially as we do this.
And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that no matter if you're for or against, just come out and vote. We know historically voter turnout in this community is just so low, so just come out and vote. That's up to the voters, and just come out, it's easy, pay this, just vote.
So, the, the sales tax one, we vote on every four years.
That is correct.
Yes.
And I might, uh, suggest we amend the Exhibit A to the resolution to include that language. Uh, I think the, the county already anticipated, and that's what they're gonna have on the ballot either way, but that way, there's no confusion. And that's the, a new legislative change that's up May of this year, is the reason we include that. It applies not only to an actual tax increase, but any imposition of a tax. And I think the reauthorization is still an imposition, and, uh, the staff attorney at the Secretary of State actually agreed to that imposition as well, that's why we're making that revision.
So the county's not gonna have anything on this election coming up? Didn't they go up on the bit on their tax?
That's probably tax, so it, it's, and it's not above the required rate of approval just like ours. This has to do with the sales tax off, or with the street tax off the reauthorization only. This is strictly our street tax. Make the motion that we approve. Is there any more question? Resolution 25-08-08R is presented by Wendy Luque, two seconds.
Have a motion from Councilman Saldana, a second from Councilman Arona, to approve Resolution 25-08-08R, is presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Go to item F6, discuss, consider a bulk water resale permit application as submitted by MTZ Industrial Solutions LLC. Goal eight, create a resilient, sustainable community. Hector Martinez?
He's not here. Mayor and council, this is an application submitted by Mr. Hector Martinez. He did not submit any other, um, paperwork as to, as background for his company, or any, um, PowerPoint for you guys to view. The only thing he did submit was the application. I know in the past, council has approved, um, the last bulk water application, and y'all did mention, um, I didn't think you would like to consider another one, but when we do receive an application, we are required to bring it up, uh, before you. He did, um, add that the maximum estimated amount of water he'll be using per month is for, um, 1 million gallons, which is the cap that we've set for the previous ones.
What did you decide earlier?
What did you decide earlier to tell last year? We're not doing more, what, four years?
We're not doing any more bulk water permits, is what you all talked about last year. And from a, from a volume standpoint, it makes it very difficult, especially with what we sit right now.
And this is considered a bulk water?
This is a bulk water permit, yes, sir. We have four in town right now, or four available, and this will be adding on the next two additive items. This will be one more, this is an secondary. From city staff standpoint, dealing with Kelvin and the volumes, I would recommend that we do not approve it until we have our new wellfields at the earliest.
Not, no, but not now.
Well, I make a motion that we do not approve this.
Have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilman Arona, to.
Deny.
Deny.
The bulk water resale agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Let the record show the motion carries with Councilman Carrasco abstaining. We'll go to item F7, discuss, consider a bulk water resale permit application as submitted by Premier Power Wash LLC. Goal eight, create a resilient, sustainable community.
Shonen, yes. Mayor and Council, this is another bulk water sale application. They have listed their reasons as to why they would like to apply for this account. They've also said, they initially set their maximum amount of gallons to be 1 million as well. They did call me today, they said they wouldn't be making it, but they would like to bring that number down to 100,000 gallons.
Is this 100,000 a month or?
Per month.
For a power wash business.
What lodging facilities and restaurants are they supplying?
They did not provide that information. I also let them know that there are PowerPoints that they can submit with information to you.
And gas stations.
Yes, and when they came in, they did mention these are places that are outside of the city limits that do not have any water connections from any type of city. They just mentioned it was outside of city limits that did not have any. Type of.
May I make a motion to table?
Okay.
This is a bulk water.
Yeah, I don't think we would be bulk waters at all.
It's, it's your decision. I know. It is.
Make a motion to deny itself, or approve the application.
I'll second. And we have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilwoman Trujillo, to deny this bulk water resale permit application for Premier Power Wash. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Let the record show the motion carries with Councilman Carrasco abstaining.
Thank you.
Go to item F9, update on all the mobile vendor fees and requirements for mobile car wash business. Randy Graham.
All right, we got a young man, Andrew, that came up here. Was it last year? He talked about, you know, he wasn't being treated well, and the fee to the permit fee was just turning up. And also had somebody talk to me about, they're from Balmoral, they do groom dogs. And she's got a big business over here, and she would, also she would have to pay $350, I believe, a month. So I'm just, on that one, I'm just, you know, I had focused in just on that one deal. There's a lot of other charges in that, a lot of other fees that we charge, but I was wanting to look at that one to see if we can reduce that. You know, these people are working on the side, or even vendors that are working on the side, they have others that have regular jobs. They're trying to make, you know, extra money to, you know, do other stuff for their kids or whatever. That seems excessive to me. You know, they're putting in the time, and I think this one went to, also Snowcom, you know, I can't remember what his name is, but to the rodeo, and they were charging $350 a day. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I just think that's too high. Would like to bring that up to the next meeting as an agenda item, to discuss and consider if we can reduce that.
If we're going to do that, can we get more information about other communities that are charging for this? Because if it's, if it's good for one, it's going to be good for all.
I just want to do this because I'm business oriented.
No, I know, but I mean, let's see how we compare with other communities.
One of them said that mine hasn't been charged anything.
You know, vendors will come back and actually tell us that. We have vendors come back and tell us, contractors come in and tell us they don't charge anything for building permits in, or stop. Or they don't even require plans. I mean, we, we hear that, and we will happily look into what the other communities are charging. But we also want to keep in mind what it costs for us, for the department to process. And so those are part of the factors of why those, those fees are in place. But to be fair, absolutely.
But we need to charge something, but it's someone, some I knew, revenue source for the city. But it is more, it does affect an individual who's trying to do something, or not helping the citizen city.
Like the car washes, we don't have organs that's governing them, but TCEQ does govern that, they have to recapture their water. You know, that's sort of a hard, fat state for a mobile car wash to recapture their water. You know, the lady that you're talking about, that's the dog groomer out of Balmoral, she will not throw anything on the road, the streets. I agree with Councilman Graham, $350. My, my question on the mobile car washes, are they bonded? Is what, in the process of washing the car, they scratch it? And where does the homeowner, or the car owner, work with it?
We have no ordinances on it. We have no, we have nothing to do, no fees for them. They don't have to submit anything to us, they just have to follow TCEQ requirements. As far as fees, insurance, anything to that nature, we have nothing on it.
What is a $350 contract?
I'm sorry?
A $350, $350.
A $350, that's just for a mobile food vendor, or for vendors that are like selling, like, for example, ONGs that's, that's gets on Dollar General, just vendors that sell stuff? That those were the fees that were brought in, were the master fee schedule? That you guys approved. If you give us direction on it, we, we're more than happy to go with whatever you guys tell us.
Like Councilman Grant said, we put that next. Also, like you said, I was asking, just get a rundown of other areas. And also council members, we need to set our own pace, and set that, instead of rely on, compare ourselves to others. If we're going to compare ourselves to others, let's do it on towns that are identical, not identical, but general same size.
And I, and I get wanting to review, but I feel that if we amend and change and amend every time somebody comes up and says that it's too high, where, where is it going to stop? You know, it's going to be like up, down, up, down, well, let's bring it up, let's bring it down. And I, I get the fees may, may seem expensive to, to some, and it's, it's, I don't know, I mean, how, where do we stop the line at changing and amending and reconsidering?
We need to come up with ordinance.
Yeah, which I, I agree, but like the master fee schedule, like we worked on that for a while, yeah. So I, I, I'm just one hope. You know, all, we're going to do what the majority of the council sees fit, but I just see a real issue if we change it, modify it every, every other one.
And my issue with all these mobile vendors is that as a town goal, we don't need to have a bunch of trailers going all over the place. We need brick and mortar buildings. We need businesses that pay taxes, taxes to the city. Some of those vendors don't pay taxes. They pay, they pay the fee and that's it. They make their money and then fly. We, we got four food vendors, but 10 unless they own the property. But yet, now everybody has a property, and we got two new over there by the restaurant. And are they, are they meeting their requirement? We got one that's barbecuing in different places. Is he being looked at?
A lot of cash only.
So. And I'm all for the businessman doing whatever they need to do. But with Councilman Trujillo, when is it going to stop? Pretty soon, we're going to have a whole place full of mobile vendors of all kinds. And yet, I, I'd rather have businesses coming here and break, and build brick and mortar. Looks better than a trailer.
I'm talking about not people coming in, but people here that want to make some extra money for the kids or whatever.
Well, and I'm all for that.
That's a concern of the food, bakery, box, and stuff like that. That's a whole separate deal.
But to me, a mobile vendor is a mobile vendor, regardless of what their service is. And, and, and we need them. I mean, let me tell you.
And we go, we pay like $20 for three tacos. That's a lot, I mean, $40 sometimes for like two plates of tacos, and that's, that's one person. The economy, I get the prices of stuff, stuff's expensive, but I think they could afford to pay $350 on one. Like they probably make that in like half a day. That's what I'm saying. They're expensive. They haven't brought the prices down for any of our locals. They've come up.
I think, I think we need to, like what Councilman Graham said, bring it to discuss, but we need, we need to sit down before we bring it up here and spend an hour discussing what I don't like, what they don't like, and all that, and work it out, and then bring it as an agenda item to vote yea or nay. Or, or set a limit, or whatever, however we work it. But to set a, set up for, for us to discuss it without everybody else being involved on, and taking our time. That way we can talk freely what we, we need. I mean, you know, I'm all for the vendors, but too many are too many. It looks like we're opening the doors to more and more. They knock off a building over here, and all of a sudden, here's a food trailer, because it's their building, it's their problem. So we need to leave and look at that order, to see how that.
We're not going to look at the food trailer on important. That's, we're looking at the more individually operated. And if they sell tacos, well, the cost of goods sold, tossing getting that good ingredients to make a taco.
I make tacos, it's not $40 a plate. I know, but I'll pay it because I DoorDash a lot, and I'm outing my own. I know. It's probably more expensive because of DoorDash. I get it.
Mayor and Council, just to summarize, just so that we make sure that we're moving in the right direction. I think probably what you all are talking about, because a master fee schedule is pretty good size. But I think what you all are referring to are more or less the vendor permits that are related to individual operations and stuff like that. So what I'd like to do is have staff will put together and pull that piece of the, of the master fee schedule, share it with you all, so you all can see it before, so it's not like green here. And then we can have a discussion, if you choose, in the next meeting, to put it on the agenda. Because we want to make sure that it's targeted, so it's not wasting your time, and that we can control the discussion. Because we will go through the master fee schedule on a regular basis as, as things have to change when we, that we will bring to you. But I think if we target it this way, it's going to make it easier on everyone, you all especially, not having to look at 60 pages and say, okay, where, where is this at?
That's what I'm saying. I just want to reach in there and grab that one thing.
We'll pull some of it out, we'll put it there, and we'll provide it to you all, so you all can look at it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to item F10, update on backflow recertification requirements. This is the goal five, promote opening consistent communication. This is from Mr. Yarres, last meeting.
Unfortunately. Kelvin Ridgely, Mayor, Council Director of Public Works. I heard your concerns, I heard the gentleman's concerns, and I also heard the concerns of the public. I did have, but the requirements are set forth by TCEQ. It's not a town of Pecos requirement, it's a TCEQ requirement, and it's a safety feature. But I did have a conversation with Randall from Barnmore Plumbing, and asked him about the cost. And he's willing to go down from 165 to 125. So he's willing to work with the customers in the community to try and help out, so we can actually get this done.
So it has to be checked every year?
Yes, says annually. Yes, ma'am.
Maybe y'all need to check on that.
Well, I mean, and now we're still here. Because one of my coworkers has been inquiring about wanting to get one. And then he's been inquiring for quite a time, and then he's got notice or notified that, hey, you got to get it certified every year. And that kind of, the cost of the flow now is kind of that. Deciding, I guess, no, not deciding, but kind of pushing back the menu, I want to do this every year.
Well, when this first came up, we noticed that the flyer that we put out did not have all of the necessary information. So we went back, we doctored that flyer, triple verified that it had all of the information that they needed and what they could expect. We couldn't add the cost, because we don't create the cost, so we don't know if those costs are going up and down. But again, I did have a conversation with Barnmore, and they were willing to negotiate on their price to make this less painful for the citizens.
So understanding to get one to the yard. I think it's a home backflow preventer, but it's got to be tested initially by them.
By licensed plumber. Yes, sir.
As long as you're homesteaded.
Yes, you have to be homesteaded. Thank you, Cindy.
Yes.
To install it yourself, yes.
Which I am.
Do y'all send a reminder, turn our line?
Yes. Yes, that's why people are getting a notice. That's why everybody's in an uproar, because they are getting those notices now that they have to have those. Yes, sir.
I'll check.
Because this is all TCEQ.
Absolutely. It has nothing to do with the town of Pecos. All TCEQ, and it is a safety feature.
And maybe I want to open up a can of worms or hope to bear. Why do not have a set hook to them in a regular meter?
Because it's already tied to a treated line. The water that's coming out of there is already treated, so there is no cause for alarm.
So our yard meter is connected to raw water?
Yes, well, it's connected to a line whenever you have your, your, your yard feed, right? That can get into the yard meter and create a hazard. So it's the chemicals that you use to grow your grass. And that can get into the line and cause harm. So that's the reason for it.
Yeah, and if Kelvin didn't say it, residential is going to be every two years, commercial is going to be every year. And it is strictly.
Can you repeat that one more time? Residential what?
Residential will be every two years, that it has to be inspected. Commercial has to be inspected every year. And it is, it's main function, it is regulated by TCEQ. We don't have any, any say on it. But it's in place to protect the water supply, because the water that's coming to your home has already been treated, it's with potable water. And if there's any contamination that would backflow into it, it could contaminate the entire system for the entire community. That's the main reason for that, that device.
And there I go again. Four inch vein into a one inch vein. Pressure's going up, right? Until I shut my water off.
That's right.
Are you talking about residual water going back?
Well, just to.
Same to it until I open up the water, but once I open up the valve, it's going to shoot out, not back into the system.
Right, but I don't know what chemicals you're using to treat your yard.
Not talking about a regular meter I have right now.
Okay.
That does not have a backflow.
Correct.
The logic to it does not match.
Right.
Those have, have, aren't built that way. The smart meters that we have out there, we're preventing that that way.
Are these meters residential irrigation?
The yard meters.
Residential irrigation?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Who is the business that charges in this community to test them? What business is the majority?
Farm or, it has to be a license.
Barnmore's local one, but there's several that come out from out of town that usually, the use, the out of town people have been charging for it. For travel time.
At 125 times 14,000 residents, that's 1.7 mil, 1,750,000 a year.
We have about, we have about 4,000.
So there's some municipalities that allow every three years. Have we looked into that? I feel like we're net picking on some small things, on certain residents, but yet, Mr. Urias, that was here, feels like it's everybody. I feel like we're net picking on some small things, on certain residents, but yet, Mr. Urias that was here feels like is everybody else being held accountable. How do we know that, I mean, that everyone has been tested? That's, all four thousand? And this is where you guys have to...
It's not gonna, okay, we're not gonna, you're not gonna get your regular water meter tested?
Correct.
Every year?
It's just a backflow meter for the yard meter.
It's a backflow meter for the yard meter program because of the way that that works. So, on that, we may have, we have a hundred and forty backflow meters in town.
Yard meters.
Yard meters in town. And so, we have a hundred and forty that we'll require now. And the reason that, and just to give you insight, Hector, only because you may not know, the reason that we, we implemented in council, put the yard meter program in place is because you all see on your bill every month, you're gonna get water, sewer, and landfill on it. The yard meter program is meant to reduce that to where if you're doing irrigation around your land, you're only paying the water fee. You're not paying sewer, you're not paying landfill. So, it reduces the overall cost for the consumer that way. And allows you to make sure that you maybe keep your yard green if you choose to do so.
But per TCEQ, it has to be tested on a resident every two years?
Every two years, yes, ma'am.
So, Hector me- Hector mentioned three years, Charles mentioned two years. I reached out to TCEQ and told him about the three years and the two years. And what the guy told me is that he recommends annually. This is all fun and games until there's a problem with the water. So, for me, annually is the best bet. I understand it's painful, but a yard meter is a luxury.
But TCEQ, TCEQ requires us to...
They recommend it because I see, I've seen two and I've seen three years.
To, uh, monitor it?
To test it annually.
So, do we get paid for it?
No.
We give them all this money and we don't get paid from the state?
We don't give them any money.
Oh, yeah, we give them all the world to come and, uh...
Yeah, I'm saying, we don't give them money for the backflow. Yeah, we don't give them money for the backflow prevention.
How many yard meters is that one more time?
Hundred and forty plus. Just under a hundred and forty-five.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
And as a risk for testing, what does he charge for? Say, I don't have it homesteaded. What's the cost for it?
I wouldn't know. I don't know the cost off the top of my head. I just wanted to tackle the, the painful piece of it as much as I could for the citizens and see if he'd be willing to work with it.
Yeah, that's special for people who are giving to the yard meter. Yep, that's a city's thing.
That's a city's fee.
Two hundred dollars. Where should we go at two hundred? We are, for the city side.
Yeah, we can't control what...
Yeah, with the coppers. But the, the Farm More Plumbing has graciously offered to decrease their fee from one forty...
From one sixty-five to one twenty-five. Twenty-five.
One twenty-five. So, they, um, for inspection. So, that's, that's a big...
Big yearly cost.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, they're being very gracious to the citizens for this, for offering.
That's right.
Initial costs are a little bit frightening this time.
It is, yes, sir.
I don't like that.
Good, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item F-11. Discuss consider the insurance premium amount to cover by employees between twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year. Goal six, sound garments and fiscal management.
Yes, I, uh, after we had the meeting on our past, uh, pay raise and finding out that we, council's getting free insurance. We have, we're having our employees cover their, the half of four hundred thousand dollars. That's just, I've been on council, that's been one of my biggest things, just every year when we... See, the insurance bill go up. I've always been a proponent of the city covering. With the understanding that if we hit hard times, we can cover, we can cover it. I think right now, we're in a very good place financially to be able to cover that four hundred thousand. Especially in light of the council voting to the pay raise and free insurance.
When was the last time the premiums, or when was the last time we passed the minimum terms on to employees?
It's been seven plus years, ma'am. It was before I got here, so... And Heather looked at it, but it's been at least seven to ten years.
So, last meeting, we relied on the input of our leadership. And if I'm correct, we'd mentioned that we would cover fifty percent? And now, we're trying to cover a hundred percent?
Well, I'm...
Is that correct?
Um, I'm proposing, cause we can, we can afford to cover.
We did. And so, the, the motion and what the direction that we got last time, I notified you all that the total increase in premiums was four hundred and seventeen thousand. And the recommendation was, you all tell us how you wanna handle that. And it could be fifty percent, it could be eighty percent, it could be a hundred percent, it could be zero.
That's a great incentive. I mean, I just was relying on your input.
Yes, sir.
You know, that sometimes that we rely on you individuals to tell us. So, I like to make a motion.
No, I think we did.
You did?
Yes, sir.
You made the motion, then I'll second with you.
Then we cover the whole hundred percent?
That's right, a hundred percent.
No problem. You committed the budget, that's the one thing that I did say. I'm not worried about it from a budgetary standpoint. It's four hundred thousand dollars, it's a lot of money. But the city is in a good place right now. So, I mean, and I can tell you, you're gonna have a lot of happy employees with that. Because there are some certain situations that the increase was significant. But the city offers a benefit way above and beyond any of the other entities. And it's been something that you all have been gracious enough to do.
It's an attractive incentive.
And, uh, again, with the understanding that, God forbid, where we hit hard times. We'll have to revisit it and, and go the opposite way. But as long as I've been in this council, that's been one of my biggest pushes, is to afford that to the employees. They deserve it.
Okay, so we have a motion from council on the run, a second from council meeting for Roscoe to cover one hundred percent of the increase in premiums for entries here for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. The increase, just the increase. The, the increase, one hundred percent of the increase. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? If the record shows the motion carries.
Charles?
Thank you, sir.
Before we get, sometime, uh, ends of this year or something, can you get one of your staff to start doing a study and check other insurance companies for price? But there's something special about this insurance policy that employees love.
Well, we do, we, we, we do shop it, just so you know, Randy, we do shop it internally every single year with the broker. There are options that are out there. The current plan that the city offers is, it's the worst word that everybody likes to hear. It's a grandfather plan. Blue Cross offers it to us because we've been with this plan for a while. Now, twelve years. The plans that they have now available, if we were to switch plans, uh, the premiums are approximately the same with much lower benefits to the staff or to the employees. And we are shopping it. I can tell you that if we moved on to another carrier, whether it be another Blue Cross, Cross Plan or United Healthcare or one of the others, our premiums are gonna stay relatively the same, but the benefit to the employee is gonna go down. So, that's one of the reasons why we haven't changed over several years. But we do shop that every single year and we do negotiate with the companies and the broker. We've been blessed, like I said, this year was horrible because we had a lot of claims. And we have some, a couple of ongoing claims. Prior though, we've been able to negotiate it for three years, or for the four years that I was here, to zero percent and ten percent last year. Even though the, the market was twenty-one percent last year.
Can you lock in a price? If you give a favorable price for two or three years, or is it just a year by year?
The insurance companies will not do that. Yes, sir. I tried to, I tried to play that card, but it doesn't work. Yes, sir. They won't do that because they have to know what your claims are and the, and the forecasting of that is never gonna be accurate because we don't know what's gonna happen from one day to the other.
We'll go to item F-12. Discuss consider ordinance twenty-five dash oh eight dash oh three rescinding ordinance twenty-three dash oh six dash oh one ROB. Street goal two, Satan's pure city, first reading, I go wrong.
Um, again, I know we've gone through this, you guys, I'm so disappointed, stick, keep going. I've had calls up to the point that I'm kinda like, I understand, I understand you see ROBs racing and speeding down the highway and this and that and that. I'll try it again. But, uh, the last one I got was July the seventh, down Stafford. Somebody was parked from Tex- stopped from Texas, saw a ROB coming from the west going east. So, he was able to get by that speed, speed sign, speed sign, clock been going fifty-six miles an hour. Which is a thirty-five mile an hour. July the fourth, I got some, some concerns called during our parade, uh, ROBs being drove during by children, underage children. That we know do not have licenses to even, uh, drive the car. I myself personally have seen people hop and down my neighborhood and I try to stop them and tell them, hey, pull it down at least. And, uh, I'm greeted with looks, a finger, nice community gestures. Little bit of the information that I ran into online, it only goes from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Death caused by ATV crashes or rollovers in twenty twenty was three hundred. Twenty twenty-one estimated about three hundred and fifty. Twenty twenty-two, four hundred. So, you see the trend that it's progressive. I didn't get any information for twenty-three and twenty-four. And twenty-five is still not out yet. I'd like the chief to be able to pull even more. But I'm surprised those that are, that were here last time as a group are not here. And I was hoping they would be because the chief was kind enough to point, not point the person up, but just say that there's a person here that's not legal. And I wanted, I wanted to answer that question again, because those individuals were here. We're having district laws, four of the rules that we have. And I understand that chief, and I was one of the proponents, I put in this thing in the books. But after seeing what I saw and the deaths that I've seen, especially involving teenagers, you know, it's... I, I don't wanna see what happened here, it's just like, I don't wanna see mass shootings that have been going on around. I'm, I am a great believer of the Second Amendment. I have my own rules. But to this, you know, we opened up something, we opened up a door for us. And too many people take, are taking advantage of it. And we don't have enough enforcement, law enforcement to contain them. We didn't think it through, and part, that's not, I'll take the blame on that one. We didn't come up with a good idea as to how to identify if they're legal or not. That's something that stood out enough for an officer to see it as, as a danger. So, chief, what, what else do we have?
So, mayor and council, before you, you'll see, um, this is a list of the current people that have permits. There's forty-three current, seven that are expired. In other words, they haven't updated it this year. Usually, the first of the year is when it should be done. And then, three that have terminated. Then that usually means either they sold it, they no longer have it, or there's no longer operable. And so far, you can see from, it's actually, when this became an ordinance until July twenty-fourth, we've written twelve citations. Citations can be anything from just operating in an unsafe manner, unsafe speed, or a minor child that's driving these ATVs. Our main goal is to keep them off the main roadways. You'll see the service roads, Highway seventeen, Business twenty, and Highway two eighty-five are absolute no-nos. They can't go on those roadways. A lot of times, you'll see them in the neighborhoods. Many times, you may see under twenty-one that are driving. You may see children unbuckled in these. Again, we've written citations for however the operation has been done with regards to the ATVs. And I get they spend a lot of money buying these vehicles. A lot of them do go on the routes, whether it's in New Mexico or Mexico. I think that's what they were designed for, is to go off-road into the hills or into the, the sand hills for a better, you know, choice. They could go there. Again, we, we're gonna enforce whether it's city ordinance or it's state law. We have the obligation to enforce either or, whatever the council decides on the ordinance.
I guess one, one of the things that, uh, you know, we, I guess we gave them our word and we liked to move here and we were doing it. But, you know, and since we gave them our word, let's, you know, stick to what we said. Go ahead and take it up now, send it in the year, I think we totally need to do. I don't mind looking at it again in the new year, but right now, it's kind of a...
Okay, well, I, I hope, okay, I, I can see your point. And if we did, well, I did, but you guys did, but I can honor that. That you will, at the time that I bring it up in December or January, first, whatever the case may be, that you please give it a great consideration for the safety of the people. I see too many kids driving. I see them in my neighborhood. I don't know about the rest of y'all, what you see, what you don't see. I know we cannot police everybody and cannot tell parents how to raise your kids and what to allow the kids to do and not to do. That's them. But the day that somebody gets hurt, I don't wanna know my confidence at all. I don't know, Monahan's had it and then just after Monahan, there was another one. A golf cart. And I know golf carts are legal, but I think they're getting looked at now.
Just legal to go to the golf course. That's it. Not to cruise the neighborhoods or go to the store. It's strictly just to go to the golf course. Yes, sir. And same thing, the roadway applies to them as well, as far as they can't go on the mayor, their major thoroughfares. The, um, service roads, Highway seventeen, Business twenty, and of course, two eighty-five, they can't go on those. They can cross over to get from point A to point B, but they can't drive strictly on those roadways.
I just should let you know, I saw one that's not a golf cart, but it's not an ROB. It's the other style of, what they call it.
Like a mule, kind of, I think is what they call them.
Dollar store, going down the sidewalk, crosses eighty, gets on the sidewalk, goes home.
Yeah, those aren't, shouldn't be on the road.
So, again, that just tells me that if there's one, there's more, just regarding.
I guess what I'd like to see to really seriously consider this is, is compare it, you know, cause they're just two wheels. And I've gone down two eighty-five and one was in front of me. He's going like this across the lines and stuff like that, and it's speed, really going fast.
Sure, and there's...
But that's just one example.
There's an equal or more motorcycle accidents. And the difference is motorcycles have been classified as motor vehicles in the Transportation Code for the State of Texas. That's really the only difference, other than the two wheels or four wheels. But they've been deemed motor vehicles is why they're able to drive on highways, whether it's interstates or, you know, main thoroughfares. They're allowed to do that. These vehicles, on the other hand, are built to be, I say, on a beach or off-road in a mountain. And you'll see a lot of beachfront properties or beachfront towns that they have these ordinances where they allow them a lot of mobility throughout the communities. But if you'll look at some of their ordinances, they're starting to change as well. Because there have been some major accidents where innocent people have been, been killed.
And I think, I know we've kind of gone back and forth and I'll say it again. I was against it way back then, I'm against it now. And I feel that if I can vote against something that I know in my own conscience, in my brain, that is a safety issue, and if somebody blows up my phone and is mad at me, but I can save, try to save somebody from having a horrible accident, um, if they, if I lose that vote in the next election, then so be it. But I'm gonna vote what I think is right and for the safety of the community. And I, I think these things are dangerous and we're just buying time for a tragedy to happen. And then, when it happens, we're gonna come back here and be like, oh, well, you know, it was all right. And I, I understand, but these things are dangerous and I, I don't want them on the street. I don't.
Understood.
And you gotta remember, motorcycles, like the chief said, are legal, neither than...
Yes.
But they're, they're worse.
Yeah, there's a lot of accidents that happen and, and they're fatal usually because there's...
You have a motorcycle crash, you can get help.
Yes.
It's very, very bad.
Agreed.
Higher the speed.
Yes, sir.
So, but...
So, I'm looking at this one. One person on hand twice. And that is the only name that I see that's on the list of active current.
Active, that are legal?
That, that are legal.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't see any of these other names on this list. So, does that mean that they... So does that mean that they are driving with, on an unregistered vehicle?
It's possibility, or they're driving someone else's vehicle.
Yeah.
Yes. And just a thought, and I know we've talked about it before, if the council still likes this ordinance, maybe create a place where people could go ride and have a good time if there's space that the city or county could go together and build a track where they can go ride these devices, or the four-wheelers, you know, it's, you never know what's gonna happen, right? They could be off-road and they could die, they could be on a street, they could die. It's, it's just unfortunate. And the difference is, the, like you say, with motorcycles, absolutely, there's a lot of fatal accidents. With these, there's fatal accidents because it doesn't have the enclosure that a motor vehicle does have. So I, I...
Thank you for that.
Sir.
It's a really great idea. It's been brought up in the past, but going back to when I say workshop, that's for all of us to get together and discuss those things. Why do we always have to be the bad guys?
Yes, sir.
You know, when we vote, when I know when I vote, I don't vote what I think is best for I. I vote for what's best for the bigger picture and the constituents. So let's find a solution and give them something, instead of them driving all the way to El Paso. You know, the taxpayers, they wanna have a little bit of quality of life. So I've heard it going back and forth, and I think that's a really good idea. Thanks for sharing that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, if I, for those that have it, I know friends of mine from government workshops, they got a very expensive convoy with a big trailer, and they go to New Mexico to El Paso, there's about a hundred, two hundred people, perhaps, in it.
Sure.
So there is an avenue, you just gotta go through. I'm sorry, we don't have it here in Pecos.
Yes, they have clubs or groups of them, they get together and go to these communities to have, you know, off-roading events, however they want. You know, they may have like, not the greatest car, but they got one of these, because, so you can see what priority is when it comes to that. And, uh, you know, I don't know what kind of terrain here would be fun for them, you know. I look at the big hole behind the rec department, but I understand there may be other ideas for that. But those, in my mind, that's what I think they're looking for, is that...
The biggest river.
Sure. And in Monahan's, I know at the sand hills, that quite a few groups go there. I've personally talked to some of them, of course. The conversation was like, "Yeah, we drink, we barbecue, we ride," and then they forget they were talking to the place and stuff.
Forget the drinking.
So, yeah, you know, they...
Just to forget you guys are in Pecos.
And it, I mean, I'm sure it is good, um, after hours, weekends off, kind of fun stuff to do, I get it. I do get it. I just, um, I'm with you guys on, I would really hate to see a very major fatality happen here. Not that this ordinance can make it or break it from happening, because it could, it's gonna happen if it's gonna happen.
I, I was, I, I voted for this. In fact, it was, I'm from Monahona, and I, kind of pushed it through with the help of Mr. Graham.
Yes, sir.
And, and I, uh, the only thing that bothered me is seeing kids driving these things when we specifically put the rule, no kids, you have to be licensed, but yet they're still in. I mean, and, and it's just like everything else in this world. It all takes one or two to, to, to make it work, to make it better for everybody.
Sure.
And, uh, but this is where people don't take responsibility for their own. And this is our high-priced vehicles.
They are.
And, and in fact, I, I was at the golf course Sunday, and two of them showed up. That's how they go to the golf course, and, and they're great, but it was, uh, the adults driving. And my son, my son took, "Man, I'm gonna buy them," I said, "You don't buy nothing." "So, buy your time." "Don't buy nothing yet," I said, because they, I said, "Well, we're looking at it." I said, "There's too many people not following the rules." And, and I hate, I hate to knock off something that, that, that is quality of life for some people, but some people just don't take responsibility. They don't follow the rules. They, they cut, try to cut corners, just like in everything, they'll try to cut corners. And all it takes is one or two to get caught. And I was looking at your report here, in, in five years, there are false citations, but that's not in Pecos only, right?
That's just here in the city of Pecos. And I'm gonna say that's not five years, because this ordinance hadn't been in place for, it's only been two years.
I know, that's what I heard.
Yes, sir.
Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, but here it's, what, twenty twenty-three?
Yes, sir, twenty-three to twenty-five, where we are right now.
And as many kids as I've seen out there?
Just haven't been caught.
They haven't been caught, right?
Yes.
Sort of like the four-wheelers.
I was gonna say, you see in excess of four-wheelers, and our policy on four-wheelers is we're not gonna pursue them, because once the chase is on, the danger escalates, and the accident will definitely happen.
Right.
So the officers will kind of, "Hey, that could be whatever child," and try to go home and wait for them there, because it can cause more, more danger than it's really worth.
Um, let me play devil's advocate.
Yes, sir.
Okay, these 12 citations, were they speeding?
All it's gonna show you on here is that it's operated all-terrain vehicle without meeting the requirement. So without really getting down and, and tunneling down, you won't know if it's speeding, or they're just operating without a permit, or they're operating in an unsafe manner, they're on a...
Juvenile driving.
Sure. Now, two of them, I can tell you, is a juvenile driving.
How's that compared to just regular cars and trucks, how attentionless?
Um, the same. You get a lot of unlicensed young kids.
No one done swear citations?
Oh, no, we, we write, uh, you know, 700 to 900 citations a month, and those are traffic violations.
Okay, so this is a very, very small percentage of that.
I'd probably say I have a more working auto citations than these kind of citations. When we do get these calls, we do respond to them. But, yes, sir, I mean, there's obviously the car volume compared to these kind of volume, it's, it's really skewed, yes, sir.
And you can see one of these guys, a person driving one of these, before you can pick up the phone, you're darting in and out, but...
Sure.
But I might tell you, either we're here, they're bouncing.
Sure.
Into alleys and traffic.
And it, it gets extremely dangerous whenever they know they're violating the law, the officer turns on them, and then the speed ignites. And that's the last thing, as an agency head, that I want to see happen, is that we're pursuing them and they get in a fatality.
Well, that's, mayor, I'll make a motion here, I wanna, we're gonna table this, I made a motion to table this until December of 2025, first meeting.
Okay. Have a motion from Councilman Monahona, a second from Councilman Graham, to table this item till, till our first meeting in December, although, if I say aye. Can you oppose?
Oppose.
To tabling it?
Yes. Oh. We can, we can, wait a minute. So I make a, sorry, so I make a motion that we rescind, um, no, we already have a motion...
To rescind it, or to... We have a motion on the table.
Okay, so then I'm...
And we had three voting to approve the...
Okay, sorry.
The tabling.
And then I voted against it, sorry.
Two, two against.
Okay.
But it's still passed, so we got it.
So, so before we get off, if, if we're tabling it to December, are we gonna sit down and meet and talk about how we're gonna, how we're gonna fix this? If it's not fixable, then we, we rescind it. But if we're tabling it till then, then we got a couple months, three months to meet together and see if, if it's solved or not.
Well, we told, we told them that we would give them till the end of the year to police themselves.
Can you make the records, I guess? You're making, you ought to do, but can you compile something?
So we could see if it's speeding or unregistered.
Okay, so you wanna kind of drill it down a little bit further? Okay. I'm sure we could do that.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item F-13, discuss consider accepting a dedication of a 1.30 acre tract of land, being available with right-of-way out of said section seven and eight, H and G, N Railroad Company survey, in the town of Pecos City, reached by the Johnsons.
So this is asking the council to approve a plat, the plat is off of, a property on F Street, uh, in the form of the plat, on the bottom right-hand, if you've looked at it, it does include a little detailed dedication of the, uh, right-of-way for the street out there, so I'm all in favor of it, so the, so to the council, if the council wants to approve this plat, ask present it.
Uh, mayor, I'll make the motion that we accept, uh, the dedication of a 1.12, as the item F-13 is presented. I'm not gonna read all that, sorry, Daddy. Sorry.
I'll say it.
Sorry.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman for video, a second from Councilman Monahona, to approve the section, accepting the dedication of this 1.3 acre tract of land as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries, and we do have executive session. At this time, we are going to go into executive session under Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072 real estate, 551.074 personnel issues, and 551.087 economic development, and it is 7:28.
For the record, Randy Graham left at 8:05 PM and it is now 8:49. Is there anything from executive section that needs to be brought to open session? Items for our next meeting, we've got discussing naming the cyclone, or making a... What is my, what is my word? Consider naming cyclone field number two. We've got the vendor master fee. And do we know the last time Mr. Dutchover was here with the quarterly update?
I do not.
He should have had one in July. We need that. Anything else for...
I understand that the county's putting up sirens?
They're not. That's our siren.
That's what I heard that they're putting from Mr. Barry, Barry Bouldersoff, that they're gonna put strategic place sirens throughout town.
They weren't, but it's our sirens.
Okay.
They're our sirens. And we are adding one. He's asked that we add one and I, it's something that is gonna be warranted. It's not gonna be as much here on the further, a little further than one. And so it's somewhere for coverage that we do need to get that siren. We also aren't gonna have one by cyclone mole fields.
Mm-hmm.
So those are going to be installed and the county's gonna protect there.
Anything else for the next council? Nothing else? Okay. Then we are adjourned and it is 8:51 PM.